Go ahead, Mike. Give it a try.
Oh, I see it now.
There it is.
Hold on.
Aye, aye, aye.
There were some.
All right.
There was.
I did hit it.
Back end, I think.
Well, let's see if it first here. Let me hit it. Hang on. Let me hit this.
I got an error message when I pressed it.
Randy, when I hit it, it's, well, I just hover over. It says, start your recording, but above that, it says, an organizer is recording. So I'll hit it again. So it says I'm recording.
Okay.
I can see the recording icon.
Yep, it looks like it's recording. So what I'm going to do, just as a precaution, everybody, I will record the meeting on my iPhone, just so we do have audio, just as a backup.
Okay, and at a courtesy, I did mention when we dropped off the line, I'd give this everybody a chance to log back in till closer to 7:30. We should give it a couple of minutes till people can come back on. We had quite a few people on the call, and I don't want to start things without them. All right. Commissioner Walk, Commissioner Kelly. Don't see Commissioners Seton on yet. Well, here's, here's what we'll do to kill a little time, because we do need to have it all on record anyways. So what we'll do is Tracy, if you wouldn't mind reading the virtual meeting rules again, and then we'll go through the roll call, and by that time, it'll be close to 7:30, and we can get things rolling. That's if Tracy, is Tracy on the line, Randy?
I'm not seeing her yet.
Okay. Then I'll leave. You want to read the rules, Randy?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Rules for the virtual meeting. All meetings are electronically recorded. Participants' names will not be displayed during the meeting. All participants will be required to mute their microphones when not participating in the dialogue. If a participant wants courtesy of the floor, or wants to make public comment, or has a question on a specific topic, they must type their name and address in the chat feature. The meeting facilitator will identify and call on the individual requesting to speak. If someone is participating via phone, there will be an opportunity to ask questions once the individual has unmuted their microphone and identified themselves with name and address. If someone has requested courtesy of the floor prior to the meeting via email, the facilitator will identify and call on the individual who has requested courtesy of the floor. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. These rules have been established to ensure a professional meeting environment.
All right, thanks, Randy. Well, we're not going to get things started until 7:30, because that was the reference I gave to everybody when they dropped off the call, but we will, we'll start the meeting promptly at 7:30. So it's not so much like Cinco de Mayo anymore, is it? It's like Groundhog Day. We just did this. Now we get to do it again. Okay, everybody, for everybody signing on, we're going to get started promptly at 7:30. Thank you for your patience. As we work through some of our little technical difficulties. I think we have a lot of feedback, so somebody might have their mic on. There we go. There we go. So.
It was. Can you, Joe, can you just, mic check? I want to make sure it wasn't you I shut off.
Testing one, two, three. I'm on my computer, Mike.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
All right. So Commissioner Walk, where's Commissioner, oh, there he is. Good. We got Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Seton, Attorney Zader, Randy. All right, my, my computer says 7:31, but I'm not sure. My iPhone says 7:29, so. Is it good? What time do you got there, Randell? 7:30?
7:30 on.
All right. Again, thank you, everybody, for your patience. We really do appreciate that. So with that being said, I would like again to welcome everybody to the May 5th meeting of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners. And Randy, would you be so kind as to do a roll call vote for us again, please?
No problem. Commissioner Walk.
Here.
Commissioner Seton.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
And Commissioner Morgan.
I'm still here. Thank you, Randy. All right. That being said, could I ask everybody to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. I'd like to note that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted on board docs for the public's access. I'd also like to note that the board did meet in executive session on May 3rd for legal advice. With that being said, we're going to move right into our agenda for this evening. And first on our agenda for consideration and possible action are our meeting minutes from April 21st. I'll give the board a few minutes if they have any questions or comments. Diane, I think you had, you had some, some questions or comments on, on the meeting minutes. I saw it came through.
Yes, Commissioner Morgan, on page three of our minutes, there's a statement that Attorney DeVito said the petitioner could take a different route as mentioned. However, the different route was not mentioned in the prior paragraphs. The route that was referenced at that meeting was that the applicant also was able to seek relief for that particular zoning by going to the zoning hearing board for variance. So I'd like that facted in the minutes to accurately reflect the guidance we I solicitor.
All right. I just asked it. Anybody who's not speaking, if you can mute your mic? That'd be great. Thank you. Absolutely, Diane, that makes sense. What I would suggest is, let's, let's table these minutes, allowing Tracy to go back and add in the necessary language, go back to the, the tape or whatever she might do, and then bring them back with the modifications for the next meeting. That would be my suggestion. I agree.
Yes.
Okay.
I have a couple of comments about the minutes. So pretty much following Diane Kelly's request, I'd like to add for that same subject that Commissioner Kelly and I explained our reasons why the zoning change should not be approved, and why the applicant should take that alternate route. And we gave our reasons, which I won't go into now and repeat. But I, I think one or two sentences that state we would not approve, because we think the alternate route was more appropriate. So that's one of my comments. So could we agree to add that?
Well, Mike, that, I mean, we don't, we don't want to get into putting so much detail in that gives everybody's opinions and comments. That's what, you know, it's just to give the, the action and the, and the the, the action taken, the information and the action taken. So I think once we add in the information that Commissioner Kelly had mentioned, and you look at the vote to get the more information, you would go back and listen to the meeting minutes. We don't want to make it a dissertation either.
Yeah, on the one hand, I don't disagree. On the other hand, your opinion is stated in one or two sentences, why you would approve, and why you voted yes. All I'm asking for is one or two sentences that explains why Commissioner Kelly and I voted no. So I'm not asking for anything extraordinary. I'm just asking that, like you, our comments would be included.
And I don't have a problem with it, as long as it's not a dissertation, because I think that that's not what we had talked about and should be referenced in the meeting minutes. But I don't have a problem with a line or two, as, as referenced, Commissioner Walk, as long as Commissioner Seton is good with that as well. Joe, you good?
I'm good with that, sure.
Okay. Tracy, the opportunity to make any needed changes to that and bring it back for, at our next meeting for any adoption.
Okay, I'd make a motion. Minutes and.
Well, we don't need to make a motion. We'll just table the minutes, and then they'll bring them back with the modifications at the next meeting.
Yeah.
As an agenda. Table them.
Just, just table them. Yep.
I have one more omission on page four. The Finance Committee report is not included. And that report should be included. And then, you know, make that part of the review and approval at the next meeting.
On page four of the meeting minutes.
Yeah, at the bottom, there's one sentence that says, I don't have it open right in front of me, but it says something like Commissioner Walk gave the Finance Committee report. And then the report is simply not there. So all I'm, all I'm saying is the, the report should be included.
No, I think it says, Commissioner Walk explained the Finance Committee did meet with the focus being on the audits. Is that what you're talking about, Commissioner Walk?
Yes. So referring to that point, and then after that, I gave the Finance Committee report. So I'm saying the Finance Committee report is not included in the meeting minutes, and it should be included.
I would agree. I think a couple of sentences of, to summarize, the meeting that we had would be appropriate. I believe it's an entire paragraph about the update to the Green Advisory Meeting. I think for each committee report, we should have just a enough information to understand what was discussed at the meeting.
I, I have no problem with a line or two, but again, not turning it into a dissertation, because that defeats the, the purpose of the meeting minutes. So I don't have a problem with a line or two.
Yeah, it'll be just like the GAC report. You know, just, just the short summary like we have for the GAC.
Okay. I'll, I'll make, I'll make the revisions, and then when we bring them back, then you know, you can just let me know if they're okay or not, then when I bring them back, okay? All right.
Just a line or two, Tracy, not, not a, you know, not looking for you to have to go back and, and write three more pages of, of meeting minutes. That would defeat the purpose, so.
All right, sure.
Just a line or two.
All righty, will do.
All right. And I have one comment about the last BOC meeting. It doesn't pertain to the meeting minutes. But I think it's important for me to make this comment. Commissioner Morgan, at the April 21st BOC meeting, you accused me of telling, quote, "an out-and-out lie," unquote. By definition, a lie is when someone knowingly makes a false statement with deliberate intent to deceive. In effect, you said I was dishonest, and you impugned my integrity. Your accusation was a personal attack, which is inappropriate conduct for Robert's Rules of Order. For the record, I always speak the facts and the truth in accordance with my core values of honesty and integrity. I have not ever, and I will not ever, knowingly or intentionally make a false statement to the BOC or South Whitehall Township citizens. I always research the state laws, the township ordinances, historic BOC meeting minutes and videos, and other resources to ensure that my statements are factual and truthful. And I make this unconditional commitment to the BOC and our citizens who must be absolutely certain that their government is honest and trustworthy. That's my statement, thus we move forward with the meeting.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Walk. Um. Moving forward, I will say this to you. I'm sorry you feel that way. That's, it's, and I appreciate your comment. And again, I think we all need to work together to have a healthy conversations as we go through our meetings, and I hope we can get there. So point taken, and hopefully we have a good meeting moving forward. All right. So next this evening, we have no presentations, no ordinances. However, we have a variety of resolutions for consideration and possible action. And the first resolution on our agenda this evening is a resolution extending the conditional final approval granted to a major subdivision entitled Hotel Hamilton. Randy, who do we have this evening for presentation on this one?
I believe Dave Manhart's going to give a brief introduction and then turn it over to the applicant.
That is correct.
All right, welcome, Dave.
So the application is for properties located along Hamilton Boulevard. The, it's a five-acre parcel that is kind of surrounding the King George Inn. It received preliminary approval in 2016. It had a series of extensions of that preliminary approval to get their final plan in order. Their final plan was approved in May 2020. And they are here looking for a four-month extension for that final plan approval. And I guess they're here to answer any questions, describe where they are in the process. And I would suggest they kind of explain if they think the four-month timeline is adequate. So with that, I will hand it over to the applicant. I'm not sure who's here, though. Who will be presenting.
Dave, this is Bud Newton.
Hi, Bud.
Hi, Bud Newton.
Hey, Tori, how are you tonight?
I'm good. I'm good. Welcome.
Well, thank you, guys, for having us, and good evening to all of you. I'd like to start, though, with an apology. When I stood in front of you folks last year at this time, I told you that we'd have this finished within the next year. I, in fact, thought that we probably haven't finished last fall, but little did I know at the time that with COVID, that all the state employees would still be working from home, and it'd be so difficult to have discussions with them to work out complex issues. And God forbid, you have a complex issue that involves several jurisdictional authorities. It's next to impossible to do the things that we would normally do when we'd have a group meeting and come out of that meeting with answers. Now we have to go back and forth with emails for months to try to accomplish the same thing that we could normally accomplish in a simple meeting. So despite that, though, we have a comp, we have acquired the NPDS permit for the project. We have gotten all the necessary jurisdictional authorities that need to sign the planning module to sign off on that. Your staff has recently forwarded that on to DEP for action. We have worked out the details with PennDOT on how we're going to handle the permits that have to be in the township name. For example, the water crossing of Hamilton Boulevard. And we have recently received a review letter back from PennDOT on the driveways for the site. And it was mostly some minor comments that they had on that. So shortly, we're going to be resubmitting that to PennDOT. So things are moving along pretty well with it, but much slower than what we think, and primarily because of the inability to be able to get answers to questions in a timely manner. But I think we're far enough along now that we know what we have to do. We are still awaiting DEP to come back with the planning module approval. And we do have to get the PennDOT permits yet. As I said, we're going to be resubmitting that in the next week, next couple of weeks. So hopefully, we get that soon. So I really hope that we can have this wrapped up in the next four months. However, it is sort of going to be somewhat in the outside agency approvals. In the meantime, we are in a position to work with staff to finalize the issues with the developers' agreements and those type of things. And I know Mr. Tool is available to answer any questions you have on his plans, but he does want to get this wrapped up and move forward with this project.
Thank you, Bud. Is there, Dave, do you have any comment or thoughts to add to that?
No, I, I think there may be, I'm not sure where it fell in the process, but maybe, I don't know if Commissioner Walk or Commissioner I don't know if Commissioner Walk or Commissioner Kelly have any questions on the background of the project or details. There is a site plan that I think we can pull up. Yep, here it comes. Drumroll.
So as you're pulling up that site plan, Bud, I have a quick question for you. I'm just I'm just trying to be realistic. Is four months going to be enough?
I hope so, Tori, and we want to work towards that, but we didn't want to get too aggressive. We didn't want to ask for a longer period of time. You know, if we don't, if we're not in position to have everything done in four months, we felt that would probably make more sense that we come back to you at that time and explain what's going on and and where we are in the process. You know, we we have fortunately recently made some good progress on some things that have been taking forever to get answers on, so we hope we have the answers that we have to be able to get it wrapped up.
Okay. So Commissioner Walk and Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Sutton, you know, did you? Did you need a little more background that Dave was mentioning to to better understand the that kind of the history on this particular project? Because you're coming in more towards the tail end of it. That might be helpful for all of you.
I don't.
I don't. I've I've seen this plan on the Planning Commission as well as having been for us all last year to vote, so we did get a good overview of it when it was before the board last year for final approval, so I appreciate that. I do have one question, Mr. Newton. You mentioned that PennDOT asked for some more information on the driveways. Could you just give us a short summary of of what their comments were pertaining to?
We finally got some resolution on how we were going to handle the situation with traffic, a traffic impact study, because one of the things that they found is that with the COVID, traffic volumes are down significantly. So what was decided to do rather than do a traffic impact study at this point in time? The agreement was that if it's determined to be necessary, we'll do an after study after the project's up and operating and then make whatever adjustments to traffic signal timing and stuff that would have to be done at that point in time. That was a major change. The access is still pretty much what we talked about, what is exactly what we talked about with with the Planning Commission. You know, we have, coming off of Hamilton Boulevard, you have a right, a left turn in driveway. Then you have a left turn out driveway in the middle of the property and a left turn in driveway in the far end of the property. On Cedar Crest Boulevard, we have a driveway that's going to be full access in, but it's only going to allow right turns out. PennDOT was concerned that traffic queuing back from the traffic signal at Cedar Point might block the visibility of people wanting to come out and make a left turn, so they requested that we make that driveway right turn out only.
Mr. Newton, was that a right turn out only on Cedar Crest?
Yes, it's right turn only on the Cedar Crest. If you could turn left in and right in, but you could only make a right turn out.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board for Mr. Newton on this particular request for an extension? Are there any questions, Tracy, from the public in the chat?
Are you ready for Mr. Patel?
Oh, absolutely. I thought I wasn't sure he was presenting. Absolutely.
As he's here, this is Bill Malkamas.
Hi, Bill.
How are you?
Good.
A little little bit of history. I'm going to ask Mr. Patel, when he first purchased this property, what were his plans with respect to the King George Inn?
King George Inn, at that time, we were thinking of putting it as an office, and then the issue came originally, we had the demolition permit, which we gave it back, and we said whatever is unwanted pieces, which was a wooden structure which was created around it, we demolished, and that one we cleared out, too. And then we spent the money on a roof and a windows and to make sure that it is a leak proof solid building.
How much money have you spent on the King George Inn, the building itself?
Around $250,000.
And how much money have you spent on this project to date, other than the money you spent on the King George Inn for for engineering fees and attorney's fees and other fees?
Around $1.1 million.
Right, and is that figure still growing?
Yes, it's still growing.
And would you tell the board, there were some persons on the board who were not when you on the board when you first started, but tell the board what your own plans are with respect to this property.
It's like a bank, pharmacy, and a hotel.
Right, and at this moment, that those are still your plans?
They are still the same plan.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Patel?
Any from the board? I'll hold up, gentlemen, on on opening it up to the public until you're done with your presentation, just in case there was anything else. My apologies.
I have a little question in regards to the King. The is the integrity of the buildings going to stay the same?
Yes.
It is.
That that building was inspected by an engineer in behalf of the township. That was several years ago. And they said that the building was intact and it was in good structure. And we've invited the township to come out and take another look at it.
And it will remain that it will remain a historical historical building for our township.
Absolutely.
Right, and that's the reason we removed that all the wooden structure around it, which was attached later on in the 70s or 78 to convert it to a restaurant.
Beautiful. Thank you. We appreciate that.
The portions that were removed were not historic. And obviously, the building needs rehabilitation, for example, with respect to adding HVAC and restrooms and so on. So we planned on the on the one side of the building to produce those structures that that are necessary to make it a viable building.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Commissioner Walk. Kelly, any questions, further questions?
No.
All right. Gentlemen, are you ready? I'll open it up to the public with any questions? All right, Tracy, are there any questions in the chat for this particular request?
Nothing in the chat.
All right, I'll give it a minute or two for anybody who might be on the phone. They can unmute and ask any questions you might have. All right, hearing none. I'll just defer Tony, Tony or Attorney Zader. Any further comments from either of you?
We don't have any. We've been working with the engineer over the last few months to clean up some of the comments, but we have no other comments.
I have no comments either. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That being said, do I hear a motion to move forward with extending the conditional final approval granted to a major subdivision entitled Hotel Hamilton? I have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Sutton, was that you?
Yep.
All right, a second from Commissioner Sutton. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Randy?
Yep, Commissioner Walk.
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Aye, motion carries. Gentlemen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we don't have to come back and see you in four months. We enjoy coming to visit with you, but this case, we hope we don't have to come back on this project. Thank you again.
Well, we appreciate. We appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, next, everybody, for consideration and possible action. As you all are aware, we are in the process of we had done our interviews for the vacant position on the Board of Commissioners, so we have in front of us this evening for consideration a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, to appoint a successor commissioner to fill the newly vacant seat of Matthew Mobilio. So to kind of lead into that, during the week of April 26 through the 30th, we had the opportunity as the Board of Commissioners to interview the following candidates. Jamal Ahmed, Bill McNair, Tom Uch, Tom Johns, Lee Salt, Ben Long, Dean Browning, Andy Flag, and Mark Luth. For the all of those candidates were interviewed for the approximately seven month appointed position, which would last until January 3, 2022, as said, to fill the vacant seat of Commissioner Mobilio. We would like to personally thank all of the candidates for their participation and their interest in this position. It was an absolute pleasure, honestly, to get to know all the candidates and learn about their interest in serving South Whitehall Township. At the pleasure of this board, the interview and appointment process has been agreed upon. I'm going to hand things over right now to Attorney Zader to go over the process for this evening in regard to the recommendations and ultimate motion for a resolution for appointment. Attorney Zader, would you be so kind to go over our agreed process?
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. First, a few legal details that are an overview of what is required by the First Class Township Code. There are very few requirements. It's required that if this board were to appoint a successor commissioner to fill the empty sleep, empty seat, it would be by resolution. The candidate must be a registered elector. Translated, that means a voter, a registered voter. It must have been a township resident for at least the last one year. And it's also clear under the First Class Township Code that upon such appointment, the commissioner will hold that office until Monday, January 3, 2022. The law does not prescribe specific procedures that this board of commissioners is to go through in trying to live at an appointment. But the law is exceedingly clear that it's in the discretion of the board to establish its own procedures. The board has done so, and as Commissioner Morgan just noted, there have been candidate interviews. I've been asked by the board to be followed this evening, and I believe that I speak for all four board members with what I'm about to explain. First, the board wants to ensure that it will be handled in an orderly, respectful process. Even though this topic can be an emotionally charged one for some people, anything less than respect for the process and the people, including board members, candidates, and staff is not condoned and will not be tolerated. Second, prior to any motions and votes, each commissioner will have an opportunity to identify a candidate she wants to suggest as the appointee to the Board of Commissioners. Each commissioner will have an opportunity to offer reasons of support. It's been agreed that it will not be an opportunity to explain why, in the view of that particular commitment, another candidate should not be selected. It will be an opportunity to advocate, not an opportunity to criticize. Third, after each commissioner's had an opportunity to speak about his or her preferred candidate and proceeding in the usual order for roll call voting, each commissioner will have an opportunity to make a motion to adopt a resolution to appoint his or her preferred candidate. Recognizing, of course, that the first candidate to receive a majority vote of three or four commissioners will be the person appointed by the board. This means that if the preferred candidate of a particular commissioner receives a majority vote, then any commissioner who has not yet had an opportunity to make a motion will have no such opportunity to make a motion. In other words, as soon as we get to the point of a majority vote in favor of a single candidate, that is the conclusion of the motion and voting. After a motion has been made and seconded, there will be an opportunity for public comment. Similarly, for public comment on a particular motion, which will be the motion for appointment of a particular candidate. It is an opportunity for members of the public to comment regarding that candidate only. Stated another way, during the public comment period associated with a motion, public comment will be accepted only with respect to that specific nominee and no others. Later in the meeting, as always, we will all public comment period, otherwise known as courtesy of the floor, for other matters that residents may address with the board. Personal attacks, defamatory statements, and name calling will not be tolerated. As I previously noted, everyone is expected to act with respect. Anything less than that will not be acceptable, and anyone violating that requirement will be shut down, muted by the meeting host. Fourth, if no candidate receives a majority vote, then commissioners will have an opportunity to repeat the process by putting forth another candidate, should they wish to do so. Similarly, as soon as a candidate has received a majority vote, that candidate will be deemed as having been selected as the replacement commissioner. Following this protocol, if no candidate receives a majority vote, then the board will be considered to be deadlocked. The statutory 30 day time clock for appointment of this board expires this Friday, May 7, and there was no other scheduled public meeting of the Board of Commissioners after tonight. Should a deadlock occur, then the vacancy board process would be pursued. If that should happen, the public is encouraged to stay tuned for future announcements regarding the vacancy board. The board is unanimous in its hope that pursuing the vacancy board process will not be necessary. When a candidate has been appointed, before that person can effectively join the board as a commissioner, he or she must be sworn in through the required legal process. Obviously, that will not happen tonight. With that, I turn it back over to Board President Morgan. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Zader. Appreciated. So with that being said, as Attorney Zader had mentioned, we agreed as a board that we would all give our initially, give our recommendation, and then after that recommendation, entertain a a motion from there. So to get things started, we will start with Commissioner Sutton for his initial recommendation and go through to Commissioner Walk, Commissioner Kelly, and then myself, and then consider a motion after that. So Commissioner Sutton.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. I will start with echoing Commissioner Morgan's with and thank all the candidates who applied for the vacancy on the Board of Commissioners for the remainder of this year. We had 10, nine candidates, all of whom were talented in different ways and whose interest and willingness to serve service to serve and be part of great this great township is very much appreciated. Thank you all again. As for my choice, after interviewing and carefully reviewing each candidate, the one who stood out most for me is Ben Long. When Ben ran for state representative, he said, and I'll quote, "You are not going to agree with me on every single position or every single idea, because nobody does." "I am always going to be available and accessible to listen. I'm always going to seek to do the right thing. Most importantly, I am going to bring integrity," end of quote. Ben believes strongly in giving back to our community. He has been active in politics for many years and has served on many local boards and commissions, including South Whitehall Township Public Safety Committee, Whitehall Area Chamber of Commerce, Whitehall Area Rotary and Lehigh Career and Technical Institute Advisory Committee. He understands the system and will be able to contribute from his experience. As our township evolves, younger generations are moving here, and Ben's perspective will very be very beneficial. Also, Ben is a man of faith. I believe he understands the growing diversity of our township and will respect people of all faiths and ethnicity. I strongly endorse Ben Long. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sutton. Commissioner Walk.
Yes, thank him.
Like Commissioner Seton, when I thank all the candidates, it was fantastic. We had so many people apply for the position. Could we silence somebody who's a terrible echo for me? Okay, thank you. All right. I enthusiastically endorse Lee Salt as the best candidate to serve as South Whitehall Township Commissioner. Lee understands the BOC purpose by being an active, engaged participant at almost all BOC and Planning Commission meetings. He downloaded the Pennsylvania Commissioner Handbook to learn more about Commissioner Governance. He has the knowledge that will allow him to hit the ground running and make an immediate contribution during his short seven month term in office. Lee has a vision for South Whitehall, where our community will grow responsibly while maintaining a balance between development and preservation. He will ensure that the new comprehensive plan has better planned residential communities, smarter commercial development, and as much farmland and green space preservation as possible. We would like to see our already developed unoccupied areas to be redeveloped before taking unused green space. Lee is very pragmatic. He recognizes that the BOC must address the impact that current and future development will have over the next 10 years, including the major cost impact on our schools, police, fire, other services, and infrastructure. He knows that the decision we make today will affect citizens' quality of life and the business's viability for generations to come. Lee values the diversity of South Whitehall's people and always has the best interests of the citizens in mind. For example, Lee wants to adopt more modern means of communication with citizens, such as the website, more mailings, email notifications, and open house meetings. Lee has demonstrated his commitment to the community via 17 years with the Boy Scouts of America as a local Cub Scout and Boy Scout leader, and as a youth sports coach and fundraiser. We can trust him to continue his commitment to our people as commissioner. Lee has the critical skills to perform well as commissioner. He is very intelligent, logical, independent, objective, and trustworthy. He is not predisposed to any predetermined answer. He uses common sense, asks many poignant questions of many people, listens well, understands issues, assesses ramifications, solves problems, and makes objective and informed decisions. Lee is also very honest, respectful, and collaborative when he engages other people to reach mutual agreements. He has the exact character and civility that we need in a commissioner. He answered all interview questions with truthful substantive answers. We would like to be known as a fair and honest commissioner who made the right decisions for the Board of Commissioners and the citizens. I wholeheartedly endorse Lee Salt as the most qualified and trustworthy candidate for South Whitehall Township Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Walk. Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. I will also thank all of the applicants for the time that they, that they shared with us in our interview process for completing your resumes and also letters of interest. It was very encouraging to learn about all of you and to see all of your interest in the township. So thank you again. After considering the many great people that we were, had the pleasure of interviewing, I would like to nominate Mr. Andrew Flag for the Commissioner vacancy. Mr. Flag is not new to South Whitehall Township. He has submitted his application with a very high level of interest and then met with our interview subcommittee over the last year and a half or so, as he has had a desire to serve in a vacancy position on both our Planning Commission and alternate for the zoning hearing board. Last week, I had the opportunity to get to know him firsthand as he met with our full board for an interview. His letter of interest highlighted South Whitehall as a diverse and highly desirable community, which is fortunate to have, in his words, "great agricultural, commercial, residential, educational, and religious institutions." Mr. Flag spoke confidently to our board during his interview and answered all of our questions without hesitation. Of all of the candidates we had an opportunity to speak with, he set himself apart as a consensus builder, as one who seeks to build a welcoming and inclusive community for all. He offered his experience and knowledge in business to help guide our township for these remaining seven months of this term. He answered our questions by also posing questions with a focus on how to best help the township receive its goals. Mr. Flag considers the greatest improvement needed in the township, which was the question we posed to all candidates. His answer was civility. I was intrigued by his answer, as the ethics of civility speaks to respecting others, avoiding harm, and building trust. It is my belief that he would fulfill the role as an interim commissioner with great enthusiasm, but most respect for the community and fellow board members, and the ability to listen to all perspectives and provide clear and concise leadership and direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. So again, I'd like to echo what, what all of the commissioners said and what I said initially. It was absolutely a pleasure and honor to have the opportunity to talk with all the candidates and learn more about their interest in serving our great township of South Whitehall. And after a lot of review and going through some, some amazing resumes and information and results from questions during our interview session, my recommendation for appointment is also Ben Long. Through his previous interest in participation in politics and public service, he understands local government, its process, its procedures, and its regulations. And this is not a recent interest. This is something he's been doing for many years. Ben is a resident and business owner, obviously a resident, but a business owner located right here in South Whitehall Township. So he understands the challenges and needs of, of residents and businesses. He recognizes the challenges and areas of growth, but also believes in focusing on the positive aspects of being a resident of South Whitehall Township. He feels strongly about representing all voices of the township in every aspect. I truly believe Ben would bring a fresh view to this board and interest in recognizing the changes, and an interest in recognizing the changes in demographics of South Whitehall Township, and how to balance history with progress. He has experience in service-related fields such as healthcare and environmental quality, all which can relate right back to this particular position and understanding it. He has a desire to work with businesses and developers within the confines of the law and vision for the township and its residents. Ben is not agenda-driven. He's interested in all facets of the township, emergency services, parks, public works, finance, and community development. His past community develop, his past community involvement, including the Chamber of Commerce, the Workforce Investment Board, the LTRIC Career Advisory Council, and the Rotary Club, set him apart from many others. Ben truly expressed his interest in learning and willingness to listen. He has respect of the process and of the people involved with it. He obviously has the support of South Whitehall residents, which was noticed during his run for campaign for state representative, where he received overwhelming support from all the residents right here in South Whitehall. I believe Ben brings positive energy, tenacity, and approachability. And he's not just interested in hot button items within the township. I believe Ben would be an excellent choice for the appointment for the Board of Commissioners right here in South Whitehall Township. Thank you. So with that being said, with each commissioner giving their, their recommendation, Attorney Zader, we would go right back in the same order for any motions. Agreed?
Correct. There would be an opportunity for motion. And then if there's a second, then following that, there'd be an opportunity for public comment on that particular candidate.
All right. So Commissioner Seton, you're first up for a consideration of a motion to put on the floor. Joe, I think you're on mute. There you go.
Thank you. So yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to, to have Ben Long as the commissioner for the remaining of the year.
If I could ask for clarity, Mr. Seton, when you said the ring of the year, the appointment would be until January 3, and I would respectfully suggest that be the motion.
Okay, I would change the motion to, to debate off January 3, 2022.
So we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Seton for the appointment of Ben Long. I'll second. I'll, I'm sorry, Commissioner Walk.
Yeah, I'm just sorry to interject. I just want to ask this question. Earlier when Bill McNair gave his explanation of the procedure, I know we went in a different order when we gave our recommendations, but I believe Commissioners, sorry Solicitors Zader said we would go in roll call order for the motion. So just, just a clarification on that.
Well, that is roll call order.
This is not the roll call order.
What would be the roll call order, Commissioner Walk?
Roll call is always Walt Seton, vacancy position, Kelly, Morgan. That's, it's been that way since we were sworn in. I don't know if it matters, but I think I just wanted to mention it because.
And it's fine. That, that's fine, Commissioner Walk. If you, if, if, if that's an issue, we can, I mean, if you want to pull back your motion, Joe, and let Commissioner Walk go first, that's, that's fine too.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with, with, you know, having Commissioner Walk make the first motion. Just a note that I think the roll call today was, I was first. And then Commissioner Walk was second, Kelly and Morgan. That was today. But I have no problems with Commissioner Walk going ahead first.
Um, I don't, I don't think that was the roll call today. I think I was first today. Again, I don't think it matters, but I'm just sort of.
Well, to be consistent, Commissioner Walk, why don't you go first, just to be consistent? So we'll, we'll, we'll pull back on that original motion. Is that okay, Attorney Zader? And have Commissioner Walk go?
It is. Commissioner Seton has already agreed to withdraw his motion. So I think proceeding with Commissioner Walk now, having an opportunity for motion would be appropriate.
You got it. Commissioner Walk, where's yours?
Solicitors Zader, you can help me with correct words. I make a motion that we adopt a resolution that Lee Salt fill the Commissioner vacancy for a term ending January 3rd, 2022.
Perfectly stated.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Walk. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second from Commissioner Kelly. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Randy?
Are we not going to open it to public comment before the vote?
I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. See, I'm so confused now. Absolutely. Tracy, do we have any comments from the public? And this is only on candidate Lee Salt, reminding everybody.
Yes, Jacob Roth would like to speak.
Sure, Jacob.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Awesome. So I, I want to echo first, you know, I was able to view all of the interviews, six of them in person. And I will say that of all the candidates that applied, Mr. Salt presented himself to be a fair, imbalanced candidate, who made it very clear he's not aligned with any one commissioner on the board, and that his goal is to foster less three to two votes and five vote decisions. And I really think that, you know, people look out for the future of South Whitehall Township and involving more people, especially as Commissioner Walk said, to enhance communication strategies to include more residents in township meetings and township decisions. And I won't speak to all of his qualifications, but there are two things in his interview that struck me very personally that I want to comment on. The first, when asked what he wanted his legacy to be, his initial response was, "I don't have to worry about my legacy because my legacy is my son." That was so personal, so selfless of him. And I think it really speaks to his character, that he puts his son, his, his true legacy before a seven month position on the BOC. And the second thing that struck my eye, as Commissioner Walk mentioned, was his involvement with the Boy Scouts. I'm an Eagle Scout myself. I've spent 13 years with the Boy Scouts of America. And I can tell you that our leaders, our scoutmasters, assistant scoutmasters, committee members, they are truly the best of the best in our society. They are honest, they are respectful, and they treat everybody the way they would want to be treated. And I think those are two qualities that really speak to Mr. Salt's characteristics. This is the person you want on the board. I think not appointing him to this position would be a loss, not just to the BOC, but to the, the community as a whole. So I hope he gets a majority vote. I will say, as, as a younger member of this community, who's really looking to live in South Whitehall for as long as I can, the prospect of Lee Salt being appointed to the Board of Commissioners gives me a great deal of hope for the future of this township and to make this township more inclusive and more welcoming, welcoming for the generations that come ahead. Thank you, and that's all.
Thank you. Tracy, anybody else in the.
David Burke is next.
David, welcome.
Yes, thank you. Just to comment on Lee Salt, I attend most BOC meetings, and Lee Salt is invariably there, always has good, solid comments and suggestions. And I think he'd make an outstanding commissioner. As a citizen, I don't think Lee has any aspirations for higher office or has run for higher office. And I think what we need on this board are citizens who are interested in serving the community and serving the best interests of fellow citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tracy, anybody else?
Nothing else.
All right. I'll leave it open for a minute or two, in case there's anybody on the phone that has any comments or questions before we go for a vote. All right. That being said, Randy, could you please do a roll call vote?
Sure, Commissioner Walk. Yes. Commissioner Seton.
As I said earlier, we had very talented people. And it was not a very easy decision. But I still feel that my candidate would better serve the South Whitehall Township. I say no.
Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you. Before I vote, I want to make one other comment. Mr. Burke, when you spoke, you spurred my memory. I am familiar with Lee Salt, having been a member of the Planning Commission now for two years. When we were having in-person meetings, at the beginning, he is always at the Planning Commission meeting. And when courtesy the floor is opened up, he often has questions and comments that I can, I can personally tell you are very unique and oftentimes not anything that we as a board have even discussed. And his perspective is very thought provoking. So I want to thank Commissioner Walk for nominating him. and thank Lee for his continued involvement for the last several years as a citizen. And it is, I certainly would vote yes to appoint you. I think you would be a welcome addition to the board with the knowledge that you've gained here in the township. So yes.
Okay, Commissioner Morgan.
So I echo many of the comments that were made about Lee Salt, amazing individual. He had a fantastic interview, and he does wonderful things for the community. Without a doubt, I think Lee is a great contributor to South Whitehall Township. However, I do stand strongly behind the candidate that I made a recommendation for. I think he's best fit for the position. So I will have to vote no. So motion does not carry on Lee Salt. So that would bring us to Commissioner Seton for a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint to adopt a resolution to fill the commission position until January 3, 2022. And Ben Salt would be my candidate.
Did you say Ben Salt?
I said Ben Long, I apologize.
So we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Seton. I'll make a second for that motion from Commissioner Morgan. Can we have a roll call vote, please? Oh, no. Questions and comments from the audience? My apologies, I'm so out of order here. So we have questions and comments from the public on this particular motion for appointment with Ben Long. Tracy?
Nothing in the chat.
Do I hear any from anybody on the phone? I'll leave it open for a minute or two. If anybody needs to unmute. Okay, hearing none. Can I have a roll call? I'm sorry?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment. It's Susan Fortell.
Hi, Susan.
Question. Has, has Mr. Long made any comments to indicate that he, on any future actions that, you know, are pending in the township, such as the proposal at the Parkview Motel?
None that I'm aware of?
Well, I understand that he had possibly made some on the neighborhood website, kind of being critical of the residents that were concerned about the traffic potential down with the proposal, which is still pending in front of the board since it's been continued now. So he could conceivably, if he is the appointee, be the deciding vote. If he already has some, his mind made up in that regard.
I, I would imagine nobody could have their minds made up on that regard because it hasn't even been presented to the Board of Commissioners yet.
I'm sure he can have some ideas if he's already posted some things on the neighborhood website. I can't confirm that, but obviously, if he's appointed, maybe that's something that the residents could check into before it comes, before the board in June.
Okay, thank you. Are there any?
May I just suggest that, you know, we should, yeah, we should, we should probably not not take into place and hearsay, or rather, if there's anything that somebody wants to say or do in regards to anybody, this has to be something that is substantiated and not just hearsay.
Agreed, agreed. Tracy, are there any other?
Robert Hodges.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi, how are you? I agree with Mr. Seton that nothing that's unsubstantiated should be included in this. And I don't know, honestly, I don't know anything about Mr. Long. I tried to listen in to his interview, but it was completely unintelligible. I could not understand a single word that anybody said, not just him. So I don't know where he stands on things, but I do know that he has on numerous social media support for Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Seton in the upcoming election. I believe that we should be picking someone who's neutral and does not have any stated political affiliation with any of the other commissioners already, which could color the way he would vote in future decisions. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. I, I know Ben Long very well. He's, he's a fine young gentleman. The fact that he may or may not support any one of us, myself or Commissioner Seton or anybody else, does not determine the decision that I have made at all. I believe he's well-suited for the position, and he has all the qualifications needed for that particular role.
And now just for the record, the first time that I heard that Ben Long supports me was just now. Never heard before.
Are there any other questions or comments, Tracy, in the chat?
Jacob Roth.
Jacob. Yes, just a quick comment on what Mrs. Fortell said. I do have a post in front of me on the Nextdoor app about the Parkview Development. Ben Long from the Vistas of Green Hills commented underneath, "I guess you prefer an old rundown motel." Citizen replied to that, and then Mr. Long replied to that citizen, quote, "Here's an idea. You buy the property, or you can develop it however pleases you. Otherwise, let's get back to reality and recognize the legal rights of developers and work with them as opposed to against them." There were several other replies, kind of insinuating that Mr. Long had had a connection to his development. And Mr. Long finally replied, "Zero connections to this development. It's simply a reality that people haven't come to terms with. If you don't want development, don't live in a suburban area. It's that simple. We, the general public, don't get to tell developers how to develop their property." So I'll just leave it at that. Just wanted to corroborate your statements and read this into the record. Thank you.
Okay, again, I, I agree with Commissioner Seton. I think bringing in, you know, comments and statements when they're not in their full form, I don't know what that whole thread said or how it started. And, you know, I, I think a lot of this information is hearsay, so I think we should be respectful of that as well. So are there any other questions or comments, Tracy?
Nothing else. Oh, Robert Hodges just posted again. Mr. Hodges?
Yes, I'm sorry, but I have to make the point that since, again, the interview was completely public could not understand anything, the public has to go, is what he has to answer from here. So, again, thank you.
David Burke?
Yes, thank you. With regard to what Mr. Roth said, I was involved in that chain on neighborhood. I can substantiate that he, Mr. Roth, read exactly what Mr. Long stated on there. Should Mr. Long be appointed to this position, it would only seem fair that he use himself on the Parkview matter, which will be coming up in the next month or so. It's, it's not hearsay. It's written. Obviously, Mr. Roth read it from a document, and I can vouch that that's what was said. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy?
Nothing else.
All right.
All right. Good question for clarification. Commissioner Seton, I believe when you recommended Ben Long, you stated he was a member of our Public Safety Commission?
He was.
Okay, I didn't see that on his resume. And I don't recall him being a member since I attended those meetings for years. How long did he serve on our public safety?
I'm not sure how long he served. I believe I either took it from his resume or through his website. So if I was wrong, then I removed that.
Thank you. And thank you. That's all.
All right. Tracy, is there anything else? Right. Randy, could I please have a roll call vote?
Sure, Commissioner Walk.
I want to abide by our agreed rules and not say anything negative. Would it be okay if I said something factual?
Well, of course. Of course, yes.
So prior to the interviews, you know, I heard some information about Ben Long. I was very interested in, you know, meeting him and having the interview. You know, interested, maybe even intrigued due to a lot of information that was out there. The one thing that struck me, and the reason we'll vote no, is we asked one question, what's the greatest improvement in the South Whitehall Township? And Ben's written response, I didn't see a specific answer. And then when I asked the question, with that question, Ben said that he, he couldn't think of any South Whitehall Township or words to that effect. So almost that same single answer, I, I can't bring myself to consider Ben Long.
Okay, Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes. So motion does not carry. So we will move on next to Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Andrew Flag by resolution to fulfill the remaining seven-month term with the vacant commissioner seat to expire January 3 of 2022.
I will second that motion.
So we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly, a second from Commissioner Walk, and I will open it up for any questions or comments on Mr. Andrew Flag from the public. Tracy?
No comments. Oh, there's one. Jacob Roth.
Hi, yes. I just had a brief comment. I was there for Mr. Flag's interview. And just bringing up something like Commissioner's highlight earlier, he spoke about civility and the need to restore civility to, to the BOC in order to restore trust between the board and the public. And I, I thought that was an important point, and, and nobody else from my memory brought that up. So I do feel he, he is a highly qualified candidate, and I urge the board to approve his nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Tracy, anything else?
Nothing else.
All right. I'll leave it open for one more minute, in case there's anybody on the phone who'd like to unmute with any questions or comments. All right. Randy, can I please have a roll call vote?
Sure, Commissioner Walk.
I'm gonna make a comment first. Why, I will vote yes. I only spent 45 minutes at the interview with, with Mr. Flag. I, I never spoke to him or met him previously. I was extremely impressed with what he had to tell us, and also the written documentation he sent in, including his, his resume, which is a very long, well-rounded resume that could bring benefits to the township. Could we have whoever's making that noise mute themselves? As I was saying, still there. I'll wait.
I think it may be Commissioner Seton's microphone.
Jacob, give it a try, Mike.
Okay. I was saying Mr. Flag was impressive. You know, his business background's very well-rounded, and I think it could add value to the township. But mainly, the thing that came across to me in 45 minutes with Andy Flag is that he is a leader. He will, he will help provide leadership, and he is a high-level thinker. And I want to come back to civility. When he wrote about civility, I thought it was like the Webster's Dictionary definition of civility, like, let's all be diplomatic and let's be polite with each other. And yes, of course, it includes that, but his explanation was a lot deeper. He talked about how if we have civility within the board, and if we have civility between the board and the people, and we value people, then we are going to be able to govern and deliver so much more value and benefit to the citizens of this township. I, I think out of, out of all the candidates, he is the one who, who talked about civility in the most meaningful way possible, and that's why I vote yes for Andy Flag.
Okay, Commissioner Seton? Commissioner Seton, you'll need to unmute, unmute your microphone, please.
All right, can you hear me now?
We got you.
So as I stated before, we had very, very qualified candidates, and they all have different contributions that they could put, could put forth to the township. However, I will vote no, as I still stand beyond my, behind my original person.
Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you. I did make this nomination, so of course I will vote aye and yes. I did want to point out, for the benefit of those who didn't attend the interviews, Mr. Flag's business experience goes back to 1993. He spent a great deal of time talking about his accomplishments, what he had learned from them, and what he can bring of value to the township. The one statement that he made toward the end of his interview, which, which stuck out in my mind, was that as commissioners, we lift others. We lift others. I believe that Mr. Flag will bring much-needed vision and leaps in this role, and I wholeheartedly vote yes for his nomination.
Okay, Commissioner?
All right. So I will, I will say, Mr. Flag, Andy Flag had a, had a fantastic interview. He, Andy is extremely well-spoken, without a doubt. And I, I do believe he has a, has certainly much he can contribute to this township. However, I still stand firmly on my initial recommendation. I think Andy has a lot of great qualifications. Some of the areas that I had hoped to see some more was local involvement and, and community service, but I think that's to come. For Andy, I think he has great things to offer moving forward. But again, I, I stand behind my original recommendation of Mr. Ben Long, and because of that, I, I vote no. So motion does not carry, and which would bring me, us to a motion on the floor by me, which my motion would be for Mr. Ben Long, for the reasons that I had stated before. I truly believe Ben will bring a fresh, new view to this township. I, I've known Ben for some time. I think we don't necessarily, like some people had insinuated, we're not aligned on all things. I think Ben has a lot of government experience and local government knowledge. He brings a new demographic. He brings a new demographic to or potentially could bring a new demographic to this board that we don't have, which is fantastic. And I believe he truly just wants to do good things for the community. So for that reason, I stand strong on my motion to appoint Ben Long to fill the vacant seat. To last until January 3rd, 2022.
Just a point of clarification, Commissioner Morgan. Because this needs to be by resolution, I believe we proper to characterize your motion as a motion to adopt a resolution to appoint Mr. Long as the successor commissioner.
All right, I will do that. Thank you, Attorney Zader. So I will make a motion to adopt by resolution. Mr. Ben Long for the remaining commissioner seat until January 3rd, 2022.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Morgan, a second from Commissioner Sutton. So I'll open it up for any further comments and questions again from the public. It's the same motion we had on before, so I'm not sure if there's any new information. Tracy?
No comments.
All right, I'll leave it open for a minute for anybody on the phone. All right, Randy, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Sure, Commissioner Walk. Commissioner Sutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes. All right, motion does not carry. So Attorney Zader, that would bring us back to start in the same order for any further recommendations to go through the same process again if there were any further recommendations from anybody on this board. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay. So to get things started then, Commissioner Walk, did you have any further recommendations for this evening for consideration? And if so, would you like to state them and we'll go down the line?
I have no further recommendations.
All right, Commissioner Sutton? Any further?
I do have. I do, I do have a recommendation. I would. Recommend Mark Luth. As a candidate for this position, Mark is currently serving the township and the zoning board. And he often participates in all kinds of meetings. He is the president of an engineering firm. He has appeared before many township boards throughout the Lehigh Valley. And Mark was asked what he considers the greatest need of the township, he said. It's a difficult one, it's a difficult choice. But he narrowed it down to community growth and strategic planning. In other words, working towards growth and expanding communities reasonably. Which will create opportunities for employment and will boost the economy. He believes that smart, and I'll repeat, smart growth. Can help rural communities achieve their goals for growth and development while maintaining their character. I believe Mark will be a great addition to the board.
Thank you, Commissioner Sutton. Commissioner Kelly?
No further recommendations.
Okay. All right, I have, I would support Commissioner Sutton's recommendation for Mark Luth. With very similar comments. Mark has a background in engineering and business management and he recognizes the importance of business for sustainability of a township. One of the things that kind of stood out for me with Mark's interview was he wants to be a welcoming community. Mark recognized the struggles that South Whitehall Township had for many, many years. With just process with permits and businesses starting up and just trying to be sustainable as a small business here in South Whitehall Township and he understands the importance of that and maintaining a good relationship moving forward and processes that make sense and are in tune with the the needs for today. So he's got a strong background in zoning, he's been on our zoning hearing board for quite some time and a strong understanding of the saldo. So I do believe that Mark Luth would make a wonderful. Person on the Board of Commissioners with a strong mind on the business and the residents as and for the community as a whole. So I would support Mark Luth as well. All right, so that being said. We had no further recommendation from Commissioner Walk. Commissioner Sutton, would you like to consider a motion for a resolution?
I do, I would make a motion for a resolution to appoint, to adopt a resolution to appoint Mark Luth. For. For as a commissioner for the remaining time until January the 3rd, 22.
All right, we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Sutton. I'll second that motion for Mark Luth. And before we go to a roll call vote, I'll open it up for any questions or comments from the audience. Tracy?
David Torrey.
David.
Let me unmute here, can you hear me?
We sure can, Mr. Torrey.
Okay, let's have some compromise here. We're talking about a position. I'm glad that you moved away from Ben Long if that's not going to work out. Let's try to have to go to the vacancy board on this. Let's see if we can work together for once. You know, it's very disturbing to see what goes on in this meeting. When I first became involved with the township in 1979, we had professional meetings. Woody Bernhardt, Steve Sayer, Nate Rodriguez. Let's come to a compromise here tonight and get this game over. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Torrey. We're working very hard to get there. So any other questions or comments? Tracy?
Jacob Roth.
Jacob?
Hi, yes, I was I was there for Mr. Luth's interview. And, you know, I'm not going to to make any sort of negative statements. I just want to read some of his comments that he made regarding farmland preservation and land development. When asked by Commissioner Walk on on development, he said, quote, "Cornfields are a lovely thought, but they're not practical," close quote, meaning because growth is the only way to generate revenue. And then the second statement, you know, he basically made was that he does obviously have a past business and relationship with developers as he is an engineer. So just, you know, continuing the theme we saw with the Ben Long appointment of potential conflicts of interest and being predisposed to one position or the other. Regardless of what a candidate may say, if they they're very clear about their positions on certain issues that township presidents care about. I just want that to be taken into consideration by all members of the board when taking a vote. Thank you.
You're welcome. Tracy?
Robert Hodges.
Mr. Hodges?
I just wanted to support what Mr. Torrey just said. All we've heard so far about how wonderful every one of these candidates is and then each one gets voted down. I can't believe that there's not one of these, I don't know, nine or 10 candidates that is not good enough to get three votes. Just, you know, find a way to compromise. This is ridiculous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tracy? Anybody else?
I nothing else.
All right, I will leave it open then for anybody who might be on the phone who has any questions or comments. All right, Randy, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Sure, Commissioner Walk.
No.
Commissioner Sutton?
You're on mute.
You're still on mute, Joe.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes. So motion does not carry. And we have no further recommendations. So.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
So I have an idea. We just heard a couple citizens. Invite us to compromise and make a decision tonight. I recommend that we reconsider Lee Salt. For all the reasons that I stated. And also. I'd like to highlight that. I think you all know Lee Salt from his participation. I think you do respect him. Could we get rid of the echo? I don't believe Lee has any conflicts of interest. There are comments made about two other candidates who might have potential conflicts of interest. I can't think of any conflict of interest that Lee Salt has. And I've already outlined, you know, he's an extremely strong candidate for the reasons I stated. Prior to Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Sutton, prior to your no votes, you made positive comments about Lee Salt. So I'd just like to, in accordance with our two citizens who spoke out, I'd like to. Invite you to reconsider Lee Salt. So I will make a motion. We have a resolution to appoint Lee Salt to the vacancy position for a term ending January 3rd. 2022.
Well, Commissioner Walk, I appreciate that and I actually have good comments to say about all of the candidates that interviewed and Lee Salt is a wonderful gentleman. And I think compromise can go many different ways. I would like to see us compromise for Ben Long. I think he'd be a wonderful addition to this board. So I, it's, it doesn't change my opinion on the subject matter, unfortunately.
I wasn't planning on commenting, but. I think to, you know, Will's point to. To have a candidate. Put forth that that doesn't have potential conflicts or, you know, any other areas where there would be any type of. Question at all, I think is certainly admirable to do. And I, again, I don't have any personal relationship with Lee Salt, just to have learned from him as a citizen who has been engaged at our Board of Commissioner meetings and Planning Commission meetings for at least two years that I'm aware of, maybe longer. And so when you talk about community involvement in your local government and understanding how our boards work, I don't know of any other applicant who we can say that of objectively. And I believe none of us have any connection to him and to have an unbiased candidate is the best thing that we could hope for. To your point, Commissioner Morgan, while we were speaking, I pulled up the Nextdoor app and I did a name search on Ben Long and I saw quite a few comments he made with the residents. I'm probably, and I can quote them for you if you'd like, but I think someone already did. You know. Someone's already mentioned potentially asking him to recuse for a role. Does this board really want to move in that direction? Or we have an opportunity, Lee Salt, I know, has applied twice for our Planning Commission and been interviewed and turned down, and yet he still applies. He has shown great respect for processes, great respect for us as representatives of the township. And I would second your motion, Commissioner Walk. I think. It's not to me, but my opinion, if there were a more deserving candidate at this point, considering the the time that he has already involved of his own. Free time to be involved in our township, not because it was a vacancy on the Board of Commissioners, but because he cares about our community, asks questions, wants to learn. He was the only candidate who printed out and brought with him to his interview the Board of Commissioners handbook so that he could begin reading it and understanding what the role of a commissioner is, and that is commendable. And I would ask that we would reconsider. And allow this citizen who has put forth great effort. To have an opportunity to serve us for these next seven. Motion, Commissioner Walk.
Yeah.
So I'd like to just comment on that. And I agree, I think. As far as his interest in being involved, but I can assure you that, you know, I could say the same things about Ben Long. He's applied for multiple positions within the township and hasn't necessarily gotten all of them, but still continues to apply and want to be involved. His involvement in local government for the many years he's been doing it gives him a background and knowledge base that I think is crucial. So I think the argument, and I use the argument not as in a bad way, but the discussion, not argument, back and forth about both of those candidates, they're both carry very positive attributes and I think. But I feel strongly that Ben Long is the better choice for this particular position.
I'll only comment that I personally have never seen Ben Long attend a public meeting when we were held in public, whether it's Planning Commission or Board of Commissioners. And I've been on planning now for quite a while and been attending as a citizen as well. And even on these virtual meetings. So, you know, I don't have any history beyond maybe five years older than that, but and as far as recently and having an understanding of what this board has been facing over the last few years. You know, I don't think that that's. Necessarily the same for that candidate who speaks at every meeting respectfully and asks very interesting questions for all of us.
I want to make two more comments. One is. That this board. Desperately needs someone who thinks independently. The citizens of this township. Desperately want this board to look at issues. And consider everything. And to come up with the right conclusions. It's no secret that we have two commissioners with one ideology and two commissioners with an opposite ideology. This board and this township desperately needs someone who is strikingly independent thinking and has the knowledge to do the job. Lee Salt has all the knowledge to come into this seven-month job and make a contribution immediately. So I would ask, the citizens ask for compromise. So I will specifically ask. Commissioner Morgan or Commissioner Sutton to reach a compromise for Lee Salt, who I believe is the most qualified, independent-thinking, trustworthy candidate.
Well, I'll throw that back at you, Commissioner Walk. I request that you compromise to consider Ben Long as the best candidate.
Would you like me to answer?
Well, no, I think I think I know your answer and I, you know, I think I think we can all agree to disagree on maybe who we believe is best fit for this. But I feel strongly that Ben is the best fit for this position.
I think I'm going to try to say this as positively as possible. To me, Ben Long is a completely unknown. I said before, I didn't have any information about him prior to the interview. I was very interested in learning about him. I didn't learn very much about Ben Long during the interview. You must have some knowledge about Ben Long that you may have acquired prior to the interview, why you think he is a strong candidate. I don't have any of that prior information. I didn't learn anything during the interview that tells me he's a stronger candidate than Lee Salt.
I would agree as far as interview content, absolutely. And that is what we have to make our decisions on is a resume, a letter of interest, and the questions that were asked and answered at our interviews.
So we have another motion on the floor this evening. For.
I invite Commissioner Sutton to make his comments about the opportunity to compromise.
Absolutely, Commissioner Sutton.
So, so again, you know, I don't want to be repetitive, but we definitely had very, very good candidates, and it is a very difficult decision. However, compromising is a two-way street. It does not go one way. So you can ask to compromise on your candidate, and we're asking you to compromise on the candidate of our choice. You know, I still believe that Ben, you know, Ben Long is a better candidate. That does not diminish from Lee Salt being a good person and a very productive person for the township, and he should continue to be that. So I would vote no.
Do we need to open it to the floor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Tracy, can I have any questions or comments from the audience?
Yes, we have several. Mr. Torrey.
Okay, can you hear me?
We sure can.
If there's any doubt that a candidate leans towards developers and has made negative comments to people who oppose the Parkway Manor development. Let's find an independent candidate. Let's not play politics. Commissioner Morgan, you have an opportunity tonight to show that the citizens come first, not the political agenda.
I have no political agenda, Dave.
Well, you keep pushing Ben Long. And there's people saying that it's negative.
And I believe a lot of the information is hearsay. I believe Ben Long is the best candidate.
Why can't you compromise on, we've had Lee Salt's name, we've had Andrew Flag's name. Why can't you compromise for once? Why does it always have to be second you, and when Mobolito was in, Mobolito against newly appointed commissioners and the people?
We can have compromise on a variety of different candidates. We also suggested Mark Luth. There could be compromise on that one. So compromise can go many different ways. Dave, with all due respect, it doesn't mean I have to necessarily compromise with, compromise is a group decision, not just, it doesn't have to be just from me. So.
But I go back to my point. If there's any indication that a candidate is inclined towards developers, we want neutral candidates who can look at both sides of the equation. That's what I'm expecting, and I think a lot of township residents expect that. You don't expect the political agendas that are out there now. So let's find a compromise. We've had Andrew Flag, we've had Lee Salt out there. Let's have one of you, either you or Commissioner Sutton.
And what about Mark Luth?
You said he works for developers, or he works as an engineering firm, and he has connections with developers. We want a neutral person. We want somebody who's not a developer in the engineering business.
This township is bigger than just development. There's a lot of aspects to this township. There's the emergency services, there's finances. There's many different things that are involved in this township. We have to look at the whole picture. So I respect everything you're saying, Dave, but I, you know, I have to say it's compromise is by all of us, not just me, not just by Commissioner Sutton, not just by Commissioner Walker, Commissioner Kelly. It's, you know, you keep saying I have to compromise. Well, it's all of us, not just me.
Well, you told me that Andrew Flag had extensive business experience, so I'm looking for a neutral candidate who will look at developers, will look at the citizens, and I'm concerned right now, there's just too much interest in developers, not the citizens. And we'll see that certainly on June 13th with the Parkway Manor development that has been denied by the county. We'll see where that goes. That will be the telling point. Case closed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have one comment regarding Mr. Torrey's advice. I am equally concerned about a conflict of interest in the area of development, either with property owners or developers. This term is for seven months. We will have Parkview on next month. We will have more discussions on Ridge Farm. And probably most of all, we will complete the comprehensive plan. Yes, it's only a guideline document, but we will come awful close to the zoning changes and making decisions about the rate of growth and development. And I won't go into the specifics, but you know what the issues are. Are we going to have more of the same, like we've had in the past five to 10 years? Are we going to reset direction in the township? And what are we going to do about agricultural zoning? Are we going to finally create some agricultural zoning and preserve the first agricultural farmland in the township ever? We need candidates who are going to be open-minded to all of that and not be driven strictly down the path of large development and no preservation, which is some of the answers that were given during the interviews.
Well, I will say this in regards to Ben Long. He lives, his family were, I believe he mentioned, were lifelong farmers. He's very familiar. He had very open views to land development and preservation of land. He talked about that at his interview. So I think there's a lot of assumptions being made tonight on people's positions on different subject matters. And that's exactly what they are. They're all assumptions, and that's, I don't think that's appropriate. I don't know exactly where, you know, Lee stands on everything. I don't know exactly where Ben stands on everything. But I think that, you know, for us to say, well, one person stands this way and the other person stands that way, that's unfair to the candidates. So I'll just, that being said.
Let me, let me just, I'll make a quick comment. You reviewed Lee Salt's application for the Planning Commission. You reviewed his application for this board position. You interviewed him. You heard me ask questions about growth and development and preservation. I just read everything that he submitted and stated. So now you're saying you don't know where he stands. He's told you where he stands.
Mike, let me stop you before you have to go into detail. I don't say I didn't know where he stands on different particular projects.
You said you don't know where he stands. You just said, you're an expert at this. You say one thing, and three minutes later, you say something opposite. You just said, I don't know where Ben Long stands on development. I don't know where Lee Salt stands. So I'm telling you, Lee Salt told you where he stands. I just told you everything that Lee Salt submitted in paper and said at the interview. So you do know where he stands. He's looking for balanced development, and he wants, he's interested in preservation.
Okay.
Some of the other candidates haven't said that.
Like?
Don't believe it.
All right.
Go ahead.
No, I'm good. I'm good. I'm not going to argue with you. It's not really productive, so I'm good. Tracy, is there any other questions or comments?
Yes, we have a couple more. Tom Wood.
Tom.
Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Well, you know, it's, this is the same old deadlock that always seems to happen. And I think there's an elephant in the room, and since I have no vested interest in this whole thing, I'm going to bring up the elephant in the room. But first, let me say, Lee Salt, what's not like, what's not to like about Lee Salt? As a person, as a contributor to the community. When I saw the list of people who were intending to fill this seat, I thought, obviously, everyone's going to select Lee Salt. He's an awesome guy, and he's got great views, and he's very committed and involved in all these deliberations, and he has an objective viewpoint. But I think the real elephant in the room here is that Commissioner Morgan cannot tolerate anyone on the board who she can't control. And obviously, he's not controllable. So, and remember this, on November 18th, on May 18th.
This is not about personal attacks. It's not personal.
You know, if you can't handle criticism, don't run for public office.
I can handle lots of criticism. That's not a problem. We are not having personal attacks.
Point of order.
Just remember on May 18th that Commissioner Morgan cannot tolerate anyone on the board.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Uch. Tracy, could I have our next comment and question, please?
The next person is David Burke.
Mr. Burke.
Yes, thank you. You continue to support Ben Long, knowing that he wrote certain things that prejudice his view on the Parkview development. In continuing that support, you and Mr. Sutton are negating the 365 signatures on petitions gathered during a pandemic. There would have been a lot more signatures. You're basically saying to those citizens, I don't care what you think. I support Ben Long. If you think it's hearsay, hearsay, what he wrote, we can provide the documentation. It's all there. So it isn't hearsay, it's documented, okay? So it's a slap in the face to 365 people that live in the Parkview area to say, this is the candidate that we need on the board. Thank you very much.
Just one second, Commissioner Sutton, just for the record. I personally, in no way, shape, or form disregard any of those comments or any of those signatures. I absolutely take them very seriously. I don't believe that anybody at this point can have a position completely on that development because it hasn't been presented to the board yet. So that's a very important thing to remember. And, you know. Go ahead, Mr. Burke.
No, you're disregarding the fact that the gentleman made his view known. He actually, in a mocking manner, if you go through that whole thread, mocked the people who were concerned about their safety in this area, okay? Because of the increased traffic and the fact that that particular piece of property has no easy way in and out, except through the neighborhoods. So I have to say, you're just disregarding.
I definitely am not disregarding anybody's comments.
Personal notes, there were over 70 or 80 letters that were written to each Board of Commission member. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'm not disregarding anybody's comments. I take them very seriously. Commissioner Sutton?
And everything Commissioner Morgan said, I definitely do not disregard any of the comments or the emails that I received in regards to Parkview Manor. Parkview Manor has not been presented fully to the board for approval and to suggest that I, for this matter, any other commissioner on this board is taking one side or another is just wrong.
According to the person who's, let his views be known. That's my point. Okay? And if you need the documentation, we can provide the written documentation. It's all available. So we can do that for you.
From what I heard, from what I heard today, from what I heard today, Mr. Long indicated, maybe not the nicest way, but he indicated that that piece of property, a dilapidated hotel, should be rejuvenated into something else. That's what I heard today. And if I'm wrong, please correct me.
Yes, while people were talking about the density, they were talking about the traffic problems and the safety issues to the neighborhood. That's what the thread was about, okay? And he made his sarcastic comment. Thank you.
Tracy, are there any other questions or comments?
Yes, there's a couple more. Mr. Hodges.
Hi, I have a quick question, followed up by, that's probably a statement. Were all, my question is, were all the members of the vacancy board present during the, in the room during the interviews?
So the vacancy board is made up of the four commissioners and the appointed vacancy board member, Keesha Champagne. And they were all, everybody was present during all the interviews, yes?
Okay, so Keesha Champagne was there?
For all the interviews, yes.
Okay, then I have nothing else to say about that. But I would like to point out again, in terms of compromise, everybody here seems to have who they believe is the most qualified person to take this position. Well, so far, all of the most qualified people have been rejected. Therefore, let's settle on someone who is just qualified and maybe not. Doesn't have to be the most qualified. Qualified should be good enough for these three out of the four of you. Thank you very much.
Tracy, are there any other questions or comments?
Susan Chertel.
Susan?
Okay. I just want to reiterate what David Burke said. I don't know that you quite get it, Mrs. Morgan, that we're not just talking hearsay, what Ben Long had to say and the attitude that he showed to the neighbors. It is in black and white, written on the neighborhood website. We have copies. And if you think his statements will not be dispensed to our very well-organized neighborhood, I think you do understand by the emails and the petition signings and so forth, just how much activism there is in the adjoining neighborhoods. And if you think you're going to appoint your Ben Long so that he can be on this board next month when the Parkview proposal comes up to get you what I'm sure you and Mr. Sutton will vote for. We will certainly make sure the neighborhood is well aware of it and sees it in writing. And perhaps we'll even make sure that legal counsel is aware of it as well. Thank you.
Well, with all, thank you, but with all due respect, nobody is mine, and I don't have a position on anything yet because I haven't heard it in front of the board. So I'd appreciate not putting words in my mouth because I don't have a position. I need to hear all of the information, which will come in front of this board shortly, and then make an educated decision based on the facts in front of us, so.
Okay, but maybe you don't have a position yet, okay? We won't know until next month what your position is. But what you're doing is very, very strongly wanting someone who very strongly wanting someone who has expressed his views in writing to be making a, a, on the board at the time that it's presented. He has already made up his mind, even if you haven't. So why are you so strongly committed to Ben Long and, and, and not open-mindedly accepting Lee Salt? You're digging your heels in for Ben Long, Ben Long, Ben Long.
I don't think anything I'm gonna say to you is gonna matter, so I'm, I'm not sure how to respond to that.
Don't bother, don't bother.
Okay.
Just why?
And any other Commissioner Seton?
If I can just make, make a comment again to Michelle Teld, you know, to, to assume and to say that I or any other commissioner in the, on the board has made a decision in regards to Parkview Manor is absolutely wrong. We have not made any decision. We haven't, the plan has not been before us. And we, all this hearsay about us making decisions and deciding that it's going to go through one way or the other is just wrong. It's just absolutely wrong. Please.
Mr. Seton, I don't believe anyone said they know how you or, uh, President Morgan are going to.
I just heard it. I just heard it a minute ago.
What, what they are saying is that there's a predisposed position by the candidate that you and President Morgan back. That's what they're saying, okay?
How do you have a predisposed opinion when you don't have all the facts? I, I don't, I don't think anybody could have a.
An attitude, okay? Look at the chain, okay? We have the chain. It's not hearsay.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, there's not anything to, there's, there's nothing to have an opinion on because we haven't had it presented yet. You guys don't even have all the information, so I, it's, it's a, I, I don't, I'm not really sure why we're arguing about this because there's no, there's no answer to it. There's, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
We're arguing because you dismissed what was said as hearsay.
I did.
It's, okay? It's there. It's not hearsay. It's not undocumented. It's not one person's opinion. It was stated and it's written down. And I'm sorry.
So, not, not to continue this conversation.
Why can't we have a neutral candidate? Why do we have to have Ben Long? If there's so many questions about him, there's a lot of other candidates. And, and Kelly and, uh, Mistress Kelly and Walk have compromised. You know, with theirs, but why can't we find just, to respect the citizens' wishes? Can we do that tonight? Best respect, get off the Ben Long, find somebody else.
Tracy, could we, could we move on with any questions or comments? Commissioner Seton, did you have something else? I'm sorry.
No, I wanted to respond to just say that we also have, uh, Mark Lewis on the board as well, so.
Yep. I, I think that, that's clear. So Tracy, any other questions or comments? We need to.
Yes, and, and we need to remember to, um, you have, if you'd like to speak, please, uh, put your name in the chat and we'll go in the order that your name is listed in the chat.
Yeah, we're not, not gonna entertain comments without, um, bringing them appropriately. So Tracy.
The next person is Jacob Roth.
Hi, um, I will make this very brief and I'll stay within the, the time limits. I want to bring up something that Mr. Torrey said. Uh, Mr. Torrey made a very astute comment. Uh, you know, he was the vacancy board member for several years before he was replaced last year. He talked of compromise. Lee Salt is a compromise candidate. And, and I, I actually think Commissioners Kelly and Wolk ha- have arrived at that conclusion. You know, Mr. Uch, who spoke earlier, also applied for this position, is arguably the most aligned with Commissioners Kelly and Wolk. They were candidates in the last election. They have similar viewpoints. But instead of putting forth a candidate who is most aligned with them, Commissioners Kelly and Wolk picked a compromise fair candidate. They've moved towards the center. They've made the compromise. Commissioners Seton and Morgan have not. So Commissioner Seton and Morgan, it's on you. And, and in response to Mr. Uch's comments, which I won't repeat because they included personal attacks, but I think everybody should go back and listen to it, especially that despite this vacancy, we can pick, start to pick two new commissioners on May 18th. So compromise, Diane and, uh, Kelly and Mike Wolk have already moved to the center. You're moved, Commissioner Seton and Morgan.
So it's, um, thank you for that, Jacob. Um, I still, um, believe that, you know, I, compromise goes both ways. I haven't heard any compromise our way either, so, um, I, I think it, it, it goes both ways. So Tracy, who else do we have next?
Uh, no one else.
All right. So that being said, um, could we please have, I think we have a motion and second, um, on the floor, Randy? We would need a roll call vote.
Sure. Commissioner Walk. Um, I apologize. Could you please remind me, is this my motion for Lee Salt?
That was your motion.
All right. I vote yes. Commissioner Seton?
No.
Commissioner Kelly? And Commissioner Morgan?
No, I stand strong on my, my original. No. So motion does not carry. So, um, Attorney Zader, uh, maybe you could, uh, go through the, the next steps with us, um, and actions.
Sure. Given that this is Wednesday and the thirty-day time period under the first-class township expires on Friday and there's at least a 24-hour notice requirement for a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners, it would be an impossibility to conduct another Board of Commissioners meeting after tonight within the 24 hours. Therefore, even though the time does not run for two days, yet pragmatically, we are in a deadlock situation, which then takes this to the vacancy board. As has already been noted, the vacancy board consists of four sitting commissioners and the champagne. There is no specific protocol prescribed by statute as to how the vacancy board will operate. Uh, it'll be up to the vacancy board to make that determination. I will explain to the Board of Commissioners, presumably an executive session, uh, in responding to any questions they have. But it is my view that the vacancy board is an independent board or commission like another agency of the township. And therefore, the actual voting of the vacancy board should be properly advertised and should be a public meeting. Uh, and that process needs to conclude, if it is to result in an appointed candidate, it needs to conclude within 15 days following May 7th, which is the 27th of May. That's it.
Thank you, Attorney Zader. Um, we will then, uh, have to work with you and, and staff on, on planning for said meeting. Okay. Moving forward with our agenda this evening, we do have two motions for consideration. The first is a motion from Public Works, uh, requesting permission to proceed with the purchase of a camera truck. Um, Herb or Randy, would you like to present tonight on this one?
Yep, Herb's gonna take this.
Great. Herb, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Southway Hall Utilities Division solicited three quotes. We are asking for permission to purchase a camera truck from Q's for $328,998. This TV truck will be used to televise our sanitary sewer system. This truck will be compatible with the current camera truck that will be moving over to our stormwater side. If the camera would go down, we will have the capability to swap cameras back and forth from truck to truck. This new truck will run on the same software that the current truck runs on. This making it easier on the camera operators as it is the same software for the grading of the pipes for both trucks. This truck will give us the capability of also inspecting laterals that run from the sewer main to the house. This camera truck was budgeted in the sewer major machinery equipment fund for $350,000.
Thank you, Herb. Does the board have any questions or comments for Herb?
Herb, I had a, a quick question. Um, in one of the quotes, there was a line item of $11,000 annually for a subscription for support for the truck. Is that, um, something that's gonna be ongoing with this purchase?
Yes, every year we have to pay for support. That's in case the software goes down in the truck or we have any networking issues inside the truck. So yes, that is a yearly thing that we currently budget for this current truck that we have also.
Okay, and, um, I guess I'm just curious why there's a need for a second truck if we already have one. Is, is one not sufficient to do the lateral inspections in the stormwater?
No, the current truck that we do possess, Diane, does not have the lateral launch. So we cannot check the, the connections of the laterals to the main, which can cause the I and I into the system. At the current time, is all we can do is angle the camera up to the lateral connection and see what we can see. But if we can actually get into that connection, we can make sure we don't have any I and I getting into the system at the connection.
Okay, very good. Um, and just a, just a question. I'm not sure, Herb, if you're able to answer it. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I know that, um, some of our neighboring townships actually do inspections, um, with cameras prior to a house sale. Um, and there's a fee for that. Is that something that we've ever talked about as a township or something that we can in the future to?
Yes, we do have that on the radar because DEP has come back with some answers and they're thinking, a lot of municipalities have done a lot of cast-in-place manhole-to-manhole lining, which has taken a lot of the I and I out of the main sewer lines. And they're saying about 90% of it now is coming from the laterals. So yes, then, and we have talked about that myself, Randy, Mike Elias, about looking into that program also.
And Herb, I can just, oh, sorry, if I could just jump in real quick, Commissioner Kelly, um, Tom Harper is working on, uh, reviewing those neighboring municipality ordinances to see what, what's included in all of those and, and, and will hopefully developing something that would be a good fit for Whitehall. So it is something we are currently looking into.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that update, Randy.
All right. So any other questions or comments from the board on the request to proceed with the purchase of the camera truck?
Herb, I think you already said it. Uh, its expenditures, um, below the $350,000 budget?
Yes, correct. The price of this truck is $328,998.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions from the board? Any questions in the chat, Tracy?
Nothing in the chat.
All right, I'll keep it open for a minute. Any questions on, from the phones? Okay, hearing none. Do I hear a motion then to move forward with the permission to proceed with the purchase of the camera truck?
I'm moved.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. I hear a second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Walk. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Randy?
Sure. Commissioner Walk?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Aye, motion carries. Thanks, Herb. All right, next this evening for consideration and possible action, we have a motion requesting permission to proceed with advertising for the annual road paving contract. Herb, will you be speaking on this one as well?
Yes, I will. All right, good evening again, Commissioners. Southway Hall Township Public Works Department is respected, respectfully requesting permission to advertise a 2021 road paving bid. Attached to this memo is a list outlining the areas and the streets Public Works has previously identified in the need of resurfacing. Uh, capital improvement funds have been approved and budgeted for, for the Clifford Park Annex and Woodlawn Manor areas. The budget amount is not to exceed $1,285,455. This was budgeted in capital street construction.
All right. Thanks, Herb. Any questions or comments for Herb?
I have a question, Herb. Um, I know I've asked this before, uh, last year, uh, about the status of a township-wide master plan for paving. I know that, um, the last time I asked about it, Keystone had been helping us and now it's an in-house project. Um, if I'm correct in remembering that. Um, so I'm just wondering if you could give the board a status update of where we are with that so that as a board, we have, you know, maybe a five or 10-year plan of what we're looking at for infrastructure as we're, we're growing and aging roads. Just wanna have an understanding of the big picture.
You are correct, Diane. We did decide to do it in-house. I do have the, every road evaluated now in the township. I have it on a large map. Uh, I think it would be a lot easier to explain it to the commissioners if we did it where you could see the map and we could go over, because there are some roads that need more work done than just paving, where the curbing is deteriorated. The street tree roots are growing into the street. The sidewalks are all broken up from the tree roots. So there's more to looking at the road than me just assessing the road and putting a lot of money into the road and not trying to correct all the issues on the road at one time.
So are you suggesting, Herb, maybe a, a presentation with, with the map or, or?
Yes, we could do a presentation with the map so everyone could see it. Or however you suggest that we do it, I'm fine either way.
Maybe, maybe Diane, during one of their, um, you know, when they do their, um, their, uh, department overviews, we could set some time aside and, and Herb might be able to present what he has so far at one of the meetings coming up.
Way that if you've got a map there, um, at the township building and maybe we could drop in or, you know, just get a look at it to have an understanding of, of where we are and what we're looking at, uh, for the future.
Well, it might be a good presentation for, for a public presentation too. So maybe we could have something that everybody could see it. Whatever works.
I, I just have one comment. Um, so first, uh, thank you, Herb, for all that work you've said. You've been accomplishing. Um, to get everything, uh, you know, the status, status documented and to put it on the map. I, I guess the other aspect of it, um, maybe at a, slightly, could we please mute whoever needs to be muted? Okay, could we? Could we maybe get a higher level cost deal? In other words, what you think the expenditures would be over time? You know, I don't know how far you look ahead on this type of thing. Is there like a five-year look ahead and are, are you thinking all the expenditures will be, uh, you know, averaged out over five years? I'm not, I'm not asking you to answer this question right now, but like when, when you pull the information together maybe for a presentation, that the most detailed level will be the map, right? And there's probably some higher level, um, where you could explain the cost.
Yeah, that's not a problem. I can figure out the lineal mileage and break it down into square yards. The, the issue you're gonna have with that, Mike, is coming up with that cost is blacktop is going up every year in price. So I, I can break those down into numbers I have now for you, but I can't project in, say, three, four years where we're gonna be at for the price of blacktop. So I can give you relative numbers to what we have now. But again, that price could inflate 10, 15, 20%. But again, that price could inflate 10, 15, 20% till we get to that year.
Yeah, okay.
Good to have a baseline. I agree.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Tracy, we have any questions or comments in the chat?
Let me see. Not at the time, not at this time, rather.
All right. That being said, do I hear a motion to move forward with permission to proceed with advertising for the annual road paving contract?
I moved.
There's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. I hear a second.
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 Oh, well, Commissioner, we had a second from Commissioner Walk and a second, third in there from Commissioner Seton. So can I have a roll call vote, please, Randy?
Yep, Commissioner Walk?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Hi.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Herb. All right, next this evening, we have boards and commissions informational items. I'll just note that the Park and Recreation Board will be meeting on May 10 at 7:00 PM. The Civil Service Commission will be meeting on May 12 at 1:00 PM. The Building Codes Appeal Board will be meeting on May 12 also at 3:30. And the Green Advisory Council will be meeting on May 17 at 6:00 PM. We currently still have vacancies on boards and commission and accepting applications for our Civil Service Commission. We have two vacancies, alternate positions. The Landscape and Shade Tree Commission has two vacancies. Our Park and Recreation Board has two vacancies and our Planning Commission has one vacancy. I'd like to just throw out, I know we've talked about some possible modifications to procedures on that, but with Commissioner Mobilio now no longer involved, I wanted to throw it out to Diane. I know you've had some, a lot of interest. If it would be something that you'd like to sit and join on the interview committee so we can at least move forward while we're making any necessary changes to keep these positions filled.
Commissioner Morgan, I certainly appreciate the invitation. I'd like to suggest that we move to a full board interview process. And I think we just watched last week as we, as commissioners, interviewed candidates. It was important to have the vacancy board person attend in the event that she, he, or she, in this case it's a she, would need to cast a deciding vote. I think when we're talking about considering people for our boards, I think the same template should be applied here. The four or five commissioners are the ones that need to vote and for all of us to have a full understanding of the persons who apply, how they answer questions, their thought processes. I think it would be a good idea for all of us to hold these interviews in public workshops where the public could certainly attend if they, maybe even without questions, but to observe if they were interested. But certainly so the four or five commissioners had a full understanding of the applicants and the interview process.
I have a similar comment. I haven't given this a lot of thought, so this is going to be like really general. It just strikes me that we had a discussion about the interview process. I think we said we're having a workshop, but I don't remember the timing on it. But after that discussion, it struck me like, what is the purpose of the interview committee? It may still have a purpose, but it would be distinctly different if we changed the process as significantly as was suggested at that last discussion. So that's just my general perspective on this. In making that statement, I pretty much recognize what Commissioner Kelly said.
Well, there's no need for an interview committee if we have the full board interviewing. So, you know, if that's the direction this board wants to take, and I, at this point, I think we need to, we need to do something because we have positions that are, continue to remain vacant and these boards need representation. So if everybody wants to meet on the interviews and we want to defunk the interview committee, I'm fine with that. I just want to see us be able to fill some of these needed positions.
Well, certainly in the interim, I would be happy to fill in if there's something quickly, but I agree that it makes sense to move to a full board.
I think there may be some that need to be done quickly, so we should talk about that. But if we need to move to a full board, you know, we'll have to figure out the best logistics for that as well. Because that, with a full board, what changes is when we do a full board, they have to be publicly advertised meetings because it's the full board. It would be a little bit different than if you have an interview committee, which is just two commissioners. But I'm not, I'm fine either way. I just, I want to make sure that we can move forward and get something accomplished, so.
And can somebody just fill in? I simply don't remember. We had that discussion like three meetings ago. What was the outcome? Did we say we were going to have a workshop or no?
I think we did, but then what happened, Mike, is, you know, Commissioner Mobilio resigned and we've been consumed with interviews and other meetings. We haven't had time to have a workshop.
Yeah, okay.
Well, as I said, I would be very happy to fill in in the interim, but I think it's certainly the second Wednesday of every month is advertised as a workshop availability for this board throughout the year. And certainly we could utilize that as an opportunity as needed for holding interviews and whatever people are available to attend that meeting, it's certainly up to the board and we could move forward in that direction.
Okay.
I'm fine. I'm fine also with a full board interview. I'm also very fine with Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Kelly doing those interviews. Either one is good with me. If we do a full board interviews, I guess we will have to, I'm not sure how much time it consumes and when it will. And I guess that will be part of the issue that we will need to look at.
We'll take, Diane, we'll have to consult and see which ones are of more urgency. If we have to do some interviews with the interview committee until we can get the logistics figured out with full board interviews, we'll do that. We'll figure that out and keep this rolling.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, that's all I had to report on boards and commissions and vacancies, unless anybody else had any other information to share.
Simply that the Finance Committee will meet on May 20.
Okay. All right, and that being said, we have no direction and discussion items. Randy, did you have anything you wanted to share as far as status on Where's Dam or the credit cards?
In regards to Where's Dam, nothing new to report, other than the DCNR GRIMM was submitted. So we are waiting notification from DCNR whether that will be approved or not. We can hear sometime in the fall for that project. And Scott is going to handle the credit card update.
All right, welcome, Scott.
Hello, Scott. Good evening, Commissioners. We are in the final stages of the production for the credit card transactions. The bank account, it works and we're just waiting on the production team to be able to go live and finish up our testing for that. So that's where we're at.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions from the board? All right, are there any questions from the public, Tracy?
None in the chat.
All right, I'll leave it open for a minute for anybody who might be on the phone. All right, moving on. Okay, this is the point we have courtesy of the floor. This is the opportunity for anybody to approach the board on a non-agenda item. Tracy, do we have anybody for courtesy of the floor this evening?
Yes, let me see here. One second. Jeff Ward, his question is, and if he'd like to speak, I'll read the question and then if he'd like to speak after that, he should feel free to do so. For courtesy of the floor, his question is, if the vacancy board is unable to fill the fifth spot, will a Lehigh County judge pick the new commissioner?
Attorney Zader will default to you on that one.
The answer is yes. If the vacancy board is unable to come to a conclusion, then there would be a petition filed with the Court of Complies of Lehigh County and the assigned judge would make that determination.
All right, thank you, Attorney Zader. Hopefully that answered your question, Jeff. Tracy, anything else?
Yes, Susan Garella.
Hi, Susan.
Hi, I'm Susan Garella from 2921 West Fairmont Street. And I had talked to you last meeting about my concerns of the Stonecrest bubble as it affects my property. And I haven't heard anything from anybody regarding the mitigation of trees and maybe a wooden fence. You know, it's, we've had a very bad winter in having to see this gold, this bright bubble from 5 o'clock to 10 o'clock at night in my backyard, you know, outside all of our windows at the back of our house and my neighbor's house. It's, you know, I just, I feel like if I don't keep speaking up about it, it will get lost. I don't understand how it could have been allowed. It's such, it was such a huge structure and it was so upsetting to me and my neighbors. And at the last meeting, they tried to stick it out, but they did not, they weren't able to stay online with you guys till after 11:00 to that I could talk. So anyway, I just, I haven't heard anything and I'm upset about it still. And I just want to let you know, I'm going to just keep at it until I get, this gets resolved because it's not fair that other businesses have to mitigate their properties when they change, when they change their usage. You know, and I know Stonecrest has been there a while. I love Stonecrest because I've been a member for 20 years, but whatever's going on there now is not acceptable to the neighborhood.
Susan, Susan, thank you for coming back and bringing this back to our attention. I'll defer, Randy, I know that, was this, are you guys working on this internally? Will somebody be feeding back to Susan with some additional information?
Yeah, Commissioner Morgan, our Community Development Department is well aware of the situation. They have been working on this. I'm not sure if Dave Manhart is still on the line. He may have an update for us. Dave, are you out there?
I am. The zoning officer was out there at the end of last week, I believe. And I think she is still on the line, but I think the intent is to reach out to Susan tomorrow or the next day to go over her findings with her and kind of discuss what she, her report.
One of the things she said was about foliage being in and I have trees on my property and I have, you know, some coverage in the summer. But this was in the winter when there was no leaves on any trees. And that was my biggest concern, like they need something more, not just trees, leaves on trees. I mean, they need something to cover up the two or three-story bright ball that's in my view all winter. And they're going to do it next winter, too, I'm sure.
We can follow up with you tomorrow. I'll get on the call with Laura, the zoning officer, to go over any issues.
Susan, is that acceptable for conversation to continue this?
It is, but I've got to tell you, I've been strung along by the zoning office for, since September, is when I first brought it up that it would be an issue. I had concerns. And it's what, May? And now, you know, like they keep saying every week, we'll call you next week. We're going to be out there. But, you know, I never get a call back.
Hi, Mrs. Grella. It's Laura here on the line.
Hi.
Officer. And that's my miscommunication from the last Board of Commissioner meeting. I thought it was at the direction of the board, so I was waiting to report back to them until after tonight's meeting and then I was going to reach out to you tomorrow. So we did go out there on April 26th and we did perform a site inspection. And I have the results of that site inspection. As I said, I presented them for the board tonight for their findings. And I will go over them with you tomorrow. That's the only reason I didn't reach out to you sooner after that because I thought I was waiting for the direction of the board. So I will call you tomorrow and I will go over them. I don't want to do it tonight in a public meeting being that Craig Walls from the swim club is not present. So I don't feel it's, this is the place to do it, being that an official site inspection was performed. But if you have a time tomorrow, that is good for me to reach out to you. I can certainly do that.
Okay, I also have several other neighbors that would like to be involved with that. It's not just me. It's, there's a group of us, so.
They're the only one that should reach out to me, so certainly if they want to reach out to me, that's fine. I can give them the same results that I'm going to give you from the site inspection. I would just need their contact information.
Okay.
You would have to do that themselves. You couldn't do that for them and it's not saying that we don't want to hear them. It's just they have to do that themselves.
Okay, I will let them know.
So do you have a time tomorrow that is the best time to reach you or do you have another day that is good for you?
If, tomorrow at 11:00.
Okay, and if that doesn't work out, you can just reach me on my email. Just let me know when is the best time for us to have some communication because we would probably need, you know, maybe 15, 30 minutes.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura.
I have a question. So the last time we talked about this, I think two people had action items. Laura Harrier has already addressed hers. I recall that Jennifer Aldifer had an action item. I don't know if that was to work with Laura on some legal aspects or whether Jennifer had a completely separate action item about legal aspects. And I don't know if Jennifer's on the line with our new system here. Does anybody have any update on Jennifer Aldifer's action item?
I believe, and I believe it was to work with Laura, the zoning officer. But that's just what I recall. I don't remember anything specific about it.
I can report on this, Commissioner Walk, because I speak with Jennifer regularly, including today in advance of the meeting. She alerted me that Laura had done the inspection, that there was a report. And she informed me that if there had been any legal questions that were raised as part of the investigation and next steps, she would be available to weigh in on that to assist Laura should that need arise. She did not indicate to me that there was any such need. And I know Laura has done her job with the inspection. So I don't believe there's any remaining action item, but certainly if Laura has any questions that are of a legal nature, Jennifer would be glad to assist.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add the same comment that I had at our last meeting after Ms. Grella brought this matter up to us. So Laura Harrier, thank you for doing the inspection and having a presentation for the board later. I would like to be kept in the loop for the resolution of this, please.
Sure, will do.
Thank you.
I also have another request. This is Susan. We're having a lot of, with this swim team that's renting Stonecrest, there's a lot of traffic that's going back and forth on our streets. Every hour, you know, 20 cars come and drop kids off, 20 cars leave, back and forth. Is there any way that we can get one of those speed alert signs to? to try to warn people that they're going over the speed limit? I just think that that would help the neighborhood because really the traffic has increased. I'd say, you know, 100 or 200% since this has all been going on.
So.
Susan, this is Chief Dorni. We can certainly take care of that. We've got some speed boards. Which direction is the majority of the traffic coming from?
It goes back and forth from like 29th or Main Street to Cedar Crest on Fairmont.
Okay, okay. We will get on that. We did have a transition in our department. Lieutenant Dickinson has left. He was in charge of the traffic boards, but we will certainly work our best to get those up there and get in that area.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All right. Susan, thank you again for coming back and sharing this with us. And thank you Laura and Chief Dorni for your follow-up. All right. Tracy, is there anything else?
Just a, just a comment on, that's a bit, just a comment, Chief Dorni. The, would a road bump be in consideration over there maybe?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Would a road bump be in consideration rather than over, over by the swimming pool there?
I would certainly think it's way too early to think about that. And also that would be something for Herb to chime in on with roadway about plowing and things like that. But I would certainly like to get a traffic study done first.
All right, thank you, Chief.
All right. Tracy, anything else in, for courtesy of the floor this evening?
Uh, yes, Joanne Markowitz, 833 South Hillview Road, asked her comment to be read in its entirety, word for word. She said she greatly appreciated. Her comment is, "Have we not yet learned the valuable lesson that Facebook and VOC members or candidates, candidates do not produce the integrity that we residents, taxpayers, would like to see displayed by our VOC members? If Mr. Long didn't want this to be brought up during the selection process, he should have never posted his opinion. To think that in today's social media platform, Facebook is a dismissible source of what people believe and say is to be very naive in this day and age." Thank you. And then the next person to speak would be David Torrey.
Mr. Torrey.
Okay, one further question. Yeah, that, that, just my comment, that, that hump over swimming pools very unsightly. I just, when he's found on 22 today. But my other question is, Mr. Morgan, you're part of the planning commission, right? Leah Valley Planning Commission?
I am, yes.
They have been encouraging municipal planning compacts. And I noticed that Laura McCongey, MS and Alberts have a municipal planning compact. Why haven't we entered one with North Whitehall and Upper McCongey? And I'm particularly saying that because there's a lot of concern about warehouses on Eck Road and Chapman's Road, and any trucks would dump out at Pope Road and come down for two blocks before they get to a four lane highway. Those two 500,000 square footer plus warehouses up there in North Whitehall, we've got all the truck traffic getting on the township roads at Paul's Hardware and coming southbound. I would strongly suggest that we reach out to Upper McCongey and North Whitehall to get a municipal planning compact. So our planning commission could have a say in the warehouses that are going on up in North Whitehall.
So Dave, that's a really good point. And there has been discussions on that. It's, it's not quite that easy. You don't just get say, it's, it's a, it's a share in, in the expectation and the development plans over a regional space. So, you know, I'll, I could defer to, to Dave on this one. He's much more versed in it than I am. But we can look into it again, but it has to be a decision that's agreed upon by all the parties. That would be North Whitehall and Upper McCongey. And depending on where they are at with their comprehensive plans and their plans for the future build out of their communities, they may or may not want to participate in a regional plan. So, but it is worth having continued discussions about. So thank you for bringing it, bringing it up tonight, for sure.
Okay.
And I would just add that during our current comprehensive plan update process, the concept of a joint, a multi-municipal comprehensive plan will certainly be discussed. You know, and if it turns out to be a recommendation to pursue it, that could certainly be a recommendation to come out of this comprehensive plan. But it's something that, you know, would, we would discuss through the workshops or the working groups or, and/or the planning commission when we get into the planning commission workshops for finalizing the comprehensive plan.
Perfect. Great, great topic, Dave. So, good point.
I have a comment. I actually raised this issue a year ago, right around now, actually, maybe May, June. And I remember that the answer that I was given was that we were too far ahead in, into our comp plan already to do a multi-municipal plan. So are we, are we now open to doing that?
I think not for this round. The other piece of it is Upper McCongey just finished their plan. So with us finishing our plan this year, it puts us in a closer timeline for the next update, where we would both be kind of on a similar timeline to update our plan.
Are you, the next 10 years then?
You don't, we don't have to wait 10 years. You know, if it's something that's a priority for the board and it's certainly something that could be explored earlier. I think it's something that, you know, we get through this process and look at the results. And then, you know, if it's that recommendation, it's certainly something we can look into. We could put it on a fat, quicker timeline rather than waiting in the 10 years. There's no regulation that says we have to wait 10 years to update. Especially having two recently completed comprehensive plans makes any efforts for multi-municipal planning a lot easier. You know, a lot of the background legwork is fresh and it makes it a little bit easier to kind of merge those two plans, if that makes sense.
It does. I recall having been at some of the LVPC meetings. And I hope my memory is correct here. We don't have to be contiguous to the municipalities that we would like to join in with. And if Upper McCongey has already completed theirs, there's certainly other townships locally that we could even now partner with. Is, would there be some benefit in to begin to look into that now before we complete our plan instead of waiting five years or, or longer?
Yeah. I, I have a similar comment. I think this is a leadership issue. I fully appreciate the fact that we have multiple townships doing their excellent due diligence to complete their respective comprehensive plans. With all respect to all the hard work that's going on and everything that Dave Manhart just said. I mean, it seems like you can get trapped into 10-year cycles. And when are you gonna do it to, relative to each township's 10-year cycles? So I would, I just suggest, we're not gonna solve it tonight, obviously, but why don't we just back out of the detailed work that's being done in the 10-year cycles and say, what do we, the VOC, which is the leadership of this township, think we want to do on this? And what do the North Whitehall Township supervisors think they want to do on this? And maybe, maybe we have a leadership discussion around the subject. And then cascade whatever we come up with down to all the excellent work that's going on. I mean, that's, that's just my, my thought in general.
Well, and I would, I would just piggyback off that with a small detour to say, I know we've had a lot of conversations about farmland preservation and agricultural zoning. And one thing I would love to see soon is to ask the local Lehigh County Farmland Preservation to come in and give us a presentation so that we can all get an understanding of what our options are as we're working with landowners to see what, what's available to us as a township and to them as landowners. How do we work together and move forward? These are conversations we have not had. And I know they're willing to come and do a presentation with us. So I certainly would love to have some conversation with LVPC on what our benefit would be to do a multi-municipal, to even look into it. What benefits would it, would it ensure for us? And certainly have a conversation about what county programs are available for farmland, what grant fundings are out there. I mean, these are good conversations we can have in tandem with our plan moving forward.
Absolutely. And these are topics that, you know, when we get into the working groups, will definitely be discussed. We'll have LP, LVPC at the table at some of those. So it's certainly something that will be discussed once we get into those working groups. And then even after those working groups, if there's recommendations for further investigation, when we get to the planning commission and kind of putting all of that together, that would be another opportunity to further explore the, like, for example, the idea of a multi-municipal plan.
I think that I was speaking more as a, as a, as a governing board, having a presentation not wrapped up with the, you know, just us as a, as a group to meet together with LVPC and/or the local farmland group so that we, as the commissioners, have an understanding of what options are available for us. Because, you know, I think there's a lot we could certainly learn and complement what is being done by you and others here in the township.
Yeah, there, there's definitely a lot to learn with, with the programs that are out there. You know, we have been in contact with Lehigh County Ag Preservation. And we can certainly talk to them about doing a presentation for the board. And we can work with how best to schedule that, you know, whether it's, you know, as a agenda item or to, I, I can reach out to them and kind of figure out the best, like, timing and things with them.
So Dave, I just wanted to mention that we, we, and Diane, that's a, that's a great idea. And I'll tell you, with previous, the previous board, we, we did meet with the Ag Preservation Group and LVPC. And this board hasn't. So I think that's a great idea to kind of refresh everybody, educate everybody on what our options are with Ag Preservation, how it works, how it could work for South Whitehall, what the limitations and challenges are with it, and the funding opportunities. So Dave, certainly working through Donna Wright is probably the best.
Commissioner Morgan, I'd like to refresh your memory. So in January, we formed the Land Preservation Committee. That committee was active for like three months up, and up until March when the pandemic hit. And then it went on hold due to the pandemic. During that time period, I mentioned this during interviews, I worked almost full-time on getting educated around that whole subject. I met with Donna Wright a couple of times. I had many, many phone calls with her. I talked to neighboring townships and I, I, I talked to Lehigh County, North Hampton County, and neighboring townships who have preserved farmland. So, so actually, the two people assigned to the Land Preservation Committee, I mean, the two commissioners, I'm one and the other is no longer with us. But we, we did work. We had, we had a meeting beginning of March. We had a next step while George Kenny was still there and Dave Manhart. They had the key action to take a next, next step. I, I won't go into it tonight. But I'm encouraged that Commissioner Kelly brought this up. We can go back and reactivate work that was in progress. And I would look forward to working with David Manhart on this to see, see what we could do to reactivate this.
I think, I think what, I, I think Commissioner Kelly suggested this, unless I misunderstood her, which I agree. I know you guys have had discussions and, and, you know, educate. But I think the full board, I mean, Commissioner Seton hasn't been involved in those discussions. And I think from the public standpoint too, I think discussions from Ag Preservation on what we can and can't do in the township and how we can make it a positive endeavor moving forward would be a great presentation to have publicly. That's, that's what I thought you were getting at, Diane. So I would like to see, can I finish, please?
You're right about that.
So can I?
Oh, go ahead. You finish and then I'll talk.
No, I'm done. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Um, you're right. We had our land preservation work in progress with, with staff. And we were, we were just about getting to a point where we would come to the full board and give a presentation on that work when it went on hold. Um, I had recommended that we have Leah County come in at the time. At the time, I think you and staff didn't think it was a timely thing to do, although we had them come to working meetings. So yeah, I, I support that. And I look forward to working with David Manhart to see what we need to do to re-initiate this.
Yeah, I, I think we can certainly, they definitely piggyback and dovetail very well and kind of get the committee back up and running and, you know, bring Lehigh County to the VOC to kind of give a presentation. And, you know, it certainly opens the dialogue and allows us the opportunity to, you know, work with them on moving forward with that land preservation committee. So I think between the two, you know, the topic came up and getting the committee running again is definitely something that we can work towards.
Okay, so how about the two of us follow up a little bit? At a mutually convenient time.
We can certainly discuss that.
Okay. Tracy, we have anything else in, in the chat tonight for courtesy of the floor?
Uh, yes, David Kennedy.
Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. Dave Kennedy, Fizzen Hill Drive. I just have one question back to the vacancy board. Who appoints the vacancy board? The individual, the person on that board?
It's a, it's a regular board. It's the, the full board does. It's a, just like any other Board of Commission. There's a, you know, a recommendation made and then there's a vote.
So the entire board votes on that individual?
That's correct.
So, um, so to pick the new, the, the superintendent of the commissioner who has left that position, is that still 3-2? Or is that even?
It's a majority vote.
Okay, thank you.
Tracy, any other questions or comments for the chat?
Uh, yes, it looks like we have one more here by Joanne Markowitz. She asks, "Could we get a speed display put on Hillview Road since I don't seem to be able to get a speed limit sign installed unless a traffic study is completed per my email to South Whitehall Township? You can even put it on my property?" And Joanne, did you want to add anything else to that?
No, that's fine.
All right, thank you.
I have something to add. I have a draft email that I never sent, so I apologize for that as follow-up to the last Hillview meeting. Hillview citizens spoke out about the traffic conditions in the neighborhood. They suggested that the township, you know, does need to come and inspect or monitor the current baseline conditions. So in addition to what Joanne just requested, I, I suggest that, I was gonna write this to Renee and Chief, say, could we, could we please have like some sort of baseline traffic study done in the neighborhood? And the three people who are most outspoken about this during the Hillview meetings, they were Mr. Richard Schaller, Mr. Carl Mayberry, and Mr. Alec, I think it was Ackerman, if I got that right. They had a lot of knowledge on the subject. I, I think if you could, could actually go out and engage them and get them to give you their feedback like in the field, that would be extremely beneficial for the neighborhood.
Well, I can certainly work on a speed board, Mr. Walk, but we don't do speed studies. Well, I can certainly work on a speed board, Mr. Walk, but we don't do speed studies. We don't do traffic studies. That doesn't doesn't do the same thing. But we I'm actually communicating with, if you, if I could just finish up, I'm actually communicating with Joanne on the side to make sure that we get something up done up there. And actually, we had spoken about doing it previously after the last meetings, but there was three feet of snow and we couldn't get a speed board up there. And it's not as easy as just plopping up a speed board. We need to get a sign up there, a signpost. And if we were to put it on anything that's owned by PPL, we need their permission to do so. So there's a lot of things in the works. It's not as easy as just plopping up a sign, though.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Let me clarify. If I use the term traffic study, if you were thinking like, you know, the type of work is done for the large developments, that's not what I was talking about. I would I was just simply saying, go out and monitor what's going on in the neighborhood, aside from the the speed monitor. Maybe meet with this one, two, or three citizens who have given feedback and let let them show you. Let them just go show you in the field like this intersection is bad. We always have speeding over here. They've conveyed all that information in these meetings, but it's hard to, you know, digest it and capture it. I was just thinking like a feed, a field visit and meet with a couple of people who are most outspoken and concerned about the subject. That's what I meant.
I can tell you that I did sit up there on several occasions. And personally, I don't have a speed timing device in my car, but I saw very, very little traffic during the day that I was there. So but I did have a direct patrol for the officers to keep an eye on that. So I am getting feedback from them.
Okay, thank you.
Tracy, we have anything else in our courtesy of the floor?
Nothing else.
All right. With that being said, I'd like to note that our invoices and purchasing requisitions have been reviewed by the township manager and our director of finance. We do need a motion this evening to move forward to authorize that our checks be issued to pay our bills as tabulated. Do I hear said motion?
So moved.
A motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second? I'll make a second second by Commissioner Morgan. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Randy?
Commissioner Walk? Yes. Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, motion carries. We have no executive session planned for tonight. I do need a motion for adjournment.
Moved.
Motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Walk. All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Have a lovely evening, everybody. Thank you.
Good, everybody.
Thank you.